All the February 20, 2024, regular scheduled meeting to order. If y'all would all rise, Commissioner Perkins is going to say the prayer and Commissioner Molly is going to say the pledge.
Let us pray. God our Father in heaven, we come this day with God. Humbled before your presence, God. Rending thanks unto you of all that you have done and doing for us. We thank you, God, for how you blessed us through this day. Kept us through unseen and seen dangers. Now, Lord, we hear it, dear God. We made it safely and ask that you bless this board, dear God. Look on our chairman, dear God, our vice chair and every member of this board. Look on our department heads, dear God, and every department member. God continue to bless us and continues, dear God, our strength together, dear God. And God, look on our state and federal workers, dear God. Look on them, God. Those that are in house, dear God, that you bind every attitude, give gratitude about hate, give love and bind confusion with both peace. And God ask that you will, oh God. Bring us together, dear God. Not about party affiliations, but, God, about we, the people, dear God, let us come together as we, the people, and make this a great nation, dear God. Look on those, dear God, out on foreign soil, dear God, that's protecting us, dear God, and our first responders here, dear God, that's protecting us here. And God, with ever you, the praise and glory, in Christ we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge and allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the God for which stands one nation under God in the visible, with the beginning and justice of all.
Good evening. Welcome. We're going to start with our first item on the agenda, approval of the minutes for the January 26, 2024 special meeting, the February 2nd, 2024 special meeting, and the February 6, 2024 regular meeting. Any questions, concerns?
Mr. Chairman, just one thing. I think just for clarity, I think it was on page 376, I think it is.
Say that page again, Mr. Perkins.
I think it's 376.
Okay.
Let me get to it, I'm sorry.
I think she's working. There you go. Is that better? Can you hear us better? 376, Mr. Perkins?
Yes, sir, I think it's 376. Is there that? Just to clarify, we had said there, Commissioner, Vice Chair, Commissioner White had said we would have site-built homes and it would be for the homeowners to make the decision whether they want a site built or a mobile home. But here saying that to, he said site, I mean, a mobile home for mobile home. But looking to the resolution, it does state that we have, those that who have mobile homes can also get a site-built home.
I believe that is, Commissioner White, I believe that is correct. The resolution, we agreed to give the homeowners the choice, no matter what home was destroyed. Was that, I believe that's what we ended up on with. If your home was destroyed, you had the choice of a replacement between a site or a mobile home because of the mobile home being much quicker. So if you chose to go that route due to your condition, you could go back, but I don't really, I'm not 100%.
It's past breakfast and I don't remember even that today.
The resolution, I believe Mr. Pearson has the resolution right.
It does say, it does state that the resolution on.
Which is on item number three in our agenda. Yes, the resolution is correct, but.
Yeah, but it's in the minutes where.
Madam Clerk, if you'd just notate that, that the homeowner would have the choice of a site-built or mobile.
Right, so both of them are matching now the same when we do that.
Correct, so the minutes match.
Right, yes, sir.
The resolution.
Right. You got that, Ms. Clerk?
Yes.
All right, good deal.
And that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Perkins.
Yes, sir.
Anything else, anyone else?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Perkins, all in favor.
Mr. Chairman, it could be a motion to approve with the change proposed by Commissioner.
Commissioner White.
Motion to approve with the changes already stated.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Perkins, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. It's 5:35. We, so instead of going to public concerns and comments, which I think most of you are here to speak on behalf of item number 12, which is a time-specific item, we're going to jump to that. So item number 12, at 5:35 PM or soon thereafter, as the matter can be heard, hold a public hearing to consider special permit request number SP-24-02-01 by Chip Flowers, authorized agent for property owners Christopher Aaron Bryant and Samantha Bryant, to be granted a special permit under section 14.11 of the Swanee County Land Development Regulations for an essential service, 323 feet, guide, communications tower and associated equipment on property zone agricultural 1A1. Mr. Ron Meeks.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Just to make an appropriate record, so that this meeting was tabled, so I would incorporate everything that occurred at the last meeting into what is occurring in this meeting. So that way the record's clear that this is a continuation of a meeting.
And a previous one.
Correct.
So after contact with the applicants, the site evaluation indicated no other alternate site was viable to provide the necessary service that was requested as part of the first application that the commission had asked to be tabled. They should table conversations with the applicants. That was the source for no other alternate site. So to that, you know, anything that the commission has questions of me or representative of the agent, we can answer those. If not, I would enter them file back into the record. The proposed resolution still exists with the proposed conditions that we have. Outside of that, the applications, the site plan, what they have met meet the requirements of land development regulations.
Admitted as a continuation of one.
Thank you, Mr. Meeks. Does any of the board members have any questions for Mr. Meeks or staff? Ms. Clerk, can you turn it down just a little? I hear an echo. Is that better? Better, better, better? Better. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Meeks? Any board members?
Not at this time, Mr.
All right, well, we'll move along. We'll open the floor to public comment. Anybody wishing to speak, please come to the mic. I'm going to ask Mr. Hanica, he has a PowerPoint presentation, I believe he's prepared. He spoke to me before the meeting, it's based on battery backup, so Mr. Hanica, if you want to go first?
I think.
Do you need to swear in man or that?
Yeah, I was waiting for him to finish off the computer. Mr. Hanica, do you swear firm testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. Just one second, get this in the booth.
Yes. Mr. Chairman.
That's what it's being sworn in, not while he's getting to go.
Yeah. Hey, so while he's getting ready, if anybody's wishing to speak, let's just swear all of y'all in at one time, so if there's anybody wishing to speak, if you please rise and be sworn in, so we don't have to do this individually.
If y'all raise your right hand and let the reflectors, record reflectors, a total of six people standing to be sworn.
Seven.
Seven. Do you swear firm testimony you're about to give in this cause is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Like the record reflect that all persons said yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Morrison. Okay, Mr. Hanica.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Wayne Hanica, 1183 93rd Road, Live Oak. I'm here representing concerned citizens in North Florida. As you can tell from the slide, we're against this tower. You all have a package exactly what's coming on the screen, so you can follow the screen. Basically, we people do not want this tower, and I'll tell you why. Our petition states, I'm a resident of Live Oak, Florida, and I'm deeply concerned with the proposed construction of a 323-foot cell tower near our beloved Tiger Lake. This isn't just an abstract issue for me, it's personal. The towering structure would not only disrupt the natural beauty of our community, but also potentially affect property values. Studies have shown that the proximity of cell towers can negatively impact property values. The study published in appraisal journals found that over 90% of respondents reported that cell towers and its tenants in a neighborhood would impact interest in a property and the price would be willing to pay for it. The appraisal journal from 2005. Our homes are our biggest investment, and we should not see their value diminish because of destructive structures. Moreover, preserving the aesthetic appeal and natural environment around Tiger Lake is crucial for maintaining our quality of life. We moved here to enjoy nature's tranquility away from towering structures that marinate our skies. This petition calls on our local authorities to reject this proposal, proposed construction project. We urge you to consider alternate solutions that will provide necessary services without disrupting our community's character or affecting home values negatively. Please sign, please sign this petition. I've heard before said when special permits come up that you need a reason. Well, in that packet, there are 79 reasons of people who have signed it and do not want this tower. Approximately 60% of those are within a two-mile radius of the proposed tower. There are others, we had another 10 that came from the internet. I decided not to put them in there because they weren't people from Swanee County. I think it's important that you hear from people here, not just somebody that has an idea. At the last meeting, maps were distributed showing the new tower's service. Unfortunately, my red does not show up as well as I would like to, but the red line is what I traced from what this new tower would do. And I believe, the road markings are very, very difficult to see on that map. I believe the curved road in the center there is 122nd. So we don't get a whole lot of coverage for 323 feet. It only goes halfway between, not even halfway, between 90 and 252. There's a lot of places in this county where there's no coverage, or coverage is horrible. I, this is a Verizon tower, I have a Verizon phone. I do not have any issues in my area. Maybe other people do, but I can just tell you what I know for fact. And when I started doing my research, this one floored me. There are 396 FCC-registered antenna towers in the Live Oak area. That's not the county, that's just the area. Unfortunately, the FCC only does stuff by towns. There were another 71 in the Paramford area. I didn't include that in that number because I'd have to print out the 396 and correlate back and forth, and I didn't think it really made a whole lot of difference, other than there's a lot of towers in our county right now. When I saw that number, it was like, wow, and you can, they're only just showing a little representation. If they had every tower in there, you'd see nothing but towers on this map. The next issue that I have, whoops, I went too far, is there's another tower less than a mile away on 112. There are other towers that are also very close. I just chose that one because it's less than a mile. I heard this commission talk previously about maybe we need to change our LDRs and not allow them to put towers so close together. I agree with that. I think, I understand it's all about money, and I understand it's all about what the corporate wants, but we're here as citizens of this county to tell you what we want. And quite simply, we don't want to have cell phone tower stands, we want to have pine stands. That's the bottom line. I ask you to stop this special permit here tonight and not let it go any further. We've got too many towers now, we need to think about some other solutions that work. I know there are other places in this, in this county, and I know there are people that are willing to say, put it on my land. I ask you, Mr. White, you said that last night, so obviously your service isn't that So this one's not going to help you one bit, it's not going to do anything. It doesn't even go down to 252. So I ask you, from a citizen's standpoint, to listen to these 79 people that signed this petition and stop this special permit tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Hanica, do you want your PowerPoint presentation admitted to the record?
Yes.
All right, admitted as two.
You're ready out of town.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, I have, thank you, Ms. Hanica. I have five requests from the public to speak. I'm just, I don't have, they're not in any particular order, I'm just going to go down if that's all right with y'all. Next, Ms. Terry Monroe. Welcome.
Do I need to state my name?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Terry Monroe, 11640 County Road 49, Live Oak, Florida. Gentlemen, I live in the Tiger Lake neighborhood on County Road 49, directly across from the Bryant property. I do believe in landowners' rights, and as a property owner, I also have rights. I moved to this area eight years ago to escape the congestion of Marion County. I understand that we need towers to use our cell phones, and I am a Verizon customer as well. But I am requesting that this additional tower be moved to a location further from nearby residents. 4G is all we need for our phones. My phone works just fine, and fiber optic is on the way. I spoke to a resident who lives on 112, who is a mechanical engineer and a member of a longstanding respected family in this community. He suggested that the 160 acres on 112 purchased recently by the Bryant family from the county would be a better location for this tower, further away from nearby residents. Cell phone towers are documented as an example of environmental pollution. This is defined as an external source with no multiple negative impacts to the environment. One of these is the visual impact, which is an eyesore of a huge tower with strobe lights in sight of residents and traffic on a well-traveled County Road 49. Decrease in property values, or at least a decrease in resale value, is also a known factor. There is evidence from numerous research studies that electromagnetic radiation negatively impacts our local Florida, flora, excuse me, including trees, wildlife, such as deers, birds and insects, including bees, which are very sensitive to electromagnetic fields. Pollinators are necessary for our survival. There have been studies indicating potential health risks to humans after prolonged exposure, especially less than 500 yards from a tower, which are still being researched. My common sense tells me that if there is no harm to wildlife, there is potential harm to humans. Of course, the industry will not acknowledge this. Please consider a more appropriate location for this tower with respect to the residents of the Tiger Lake neighborhood and for all cell towers. Please consider moving them back at least 1,000 feet from nearby residents to meet the EPA recommendations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Monroe. Up next, Mr. John Pomisano. Did I say that right?
No.
Oh.
Don't feel bad, nobody knows. Took me 12 years to learn that.
I tried.
John Pomisano, 7689 161st Road, Live Oak. I've been coming to county commission meetings for a long while, haven't spoken much, but the thing I want to stress right up front is, you guys got a hell of a balancing act that you have to do. We want to balance, as I understand it, the rural county feel and all that goes with that, all the amenities that go with that, with business development and economic development. And it's a tightrope, I understand that. All of us do understand that. Some of us would like to see the reins pulled back even sharper than what they're being pulled back, but we appreciate the job that you all do. I'm here to speak on 5G specifically and 6G since this cell tower is rated for both of those signals. 5G is not a good idea for a rural county like Swanee. It is not an essential service, in my opinion, and I'll back that up in a second, regardless of what the permit states. For many, many meetings, we heard even the person five miles down the dirt road would be able to get great internet service, and Swanee Valley Electric Co-op is rolling out that service right now. It's up to the block wall of my house, I'm not even in the house yet, but I've got it installed. What I mean by bringing this up is 5G is not necessary because we already have a superior system in place and being rolled out, and that's the gig of fiber that Swanee Valley Electric Co-op is installing currently. It is filling the gap more than adequately and safe. You're going to hear probably from other people about the possible health hazards in this. 5G and 6G will require many, many more towers and antennas to truly cover the county and function as it was designed. Very high frequency, very low power, ionizing radiation that affects biological cells, trees, crops, cattle, people, bees, you've heard, you name it. We bought our property over 12 years ago here. We chose to move here to get away from urban sprawl in central Florida and the toxic environments in the big cities. We chose to live here on purpose. I've made many, many friends here who would all agree, we've heard this from several people, don't Jacksonville, Tallahassee, or Orlando my Swanee County. I oppose this and all other 5G towers. Don't turn up 5G if we can possibly avoid it, and ask that you all do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Mrs. Linda, same as his, how about that? Yeah.
My maiden name is Smith, so it's a long way to go, baby.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much.
My name is Linda Pomisano. I live at 7689 161st Road. I am a Florida State certified residential real estate appraiser, and I will comment on the topic of cell phone towers and property values. So the picture you see on the, on the top of this first page is a photo that I took from an appraisal assignment I completed in 2023 in Brevard County. The location of the cell tower is considered to be in adverse site condition. The term used within appraisal reports is external obsolescence, which is any condition outside of the subject property that can have a negative effect on marketability or market value. The appraiser must disclose any external obsolescence and analyze the impact on marketability and market value within the appraisal report. I will not be commenting on market values in Swanee County in particular, but I will be providing some general statistics from some research I found online, some of it was mentioned by Mr. Hanica. If you look at the lower part of this first page, the first report says 79% of 1,000 survey respondents said under no circumstances would they ever purchase or rent a property within a few blocks of a cell tower or antenna.
I'm sorry, I'm not trying to, can you speak a little bit out of the mic? It'll, it's weird.
She's not hearing you well on the little.
If you get too close.
Back up just a little bit.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Just back up a bit.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, so let me just repeat that. 79% of 1,000 survey respondents said under no circumstances would they ever purchase or rent a property within a few blocks of a cell tower or antenna. So if you turn to the next page, and the study shown at the top of the page, homes close to cell towers sold at a discounted price of 7.6%. And that was in Savannah, Georgia that study was done. And then the, the study further down says that increasing numbers of people don't want to live near cell phone towers, and some areas with new towers, property values have decreased by up to 20%. So what is causing what appraisers would term market resistance to properties near communication towers? It is most likely more than the towers being eyesores. People are becoming increasingly concerned about possible health hazards, including cancer, neurotoxic effects, and possible DNA disturbances. However, with new and ever more increasingly powerful EMF radiation being deployed, such as we've heard 5G and possibly 6G, the human health effects are not, they're simply not known. Although more research on EMF radiation and human health is needed, research is more clear on the effect that EMF radiation is having on pollinators such as honeybees. And if we turn to the next page, so I am also a trained beekeeper and a graduate of the University of Florida Bee College. Since buying our property here that my husband referred to in Live Oak 12 years ago, we have seen a significant reduction in the number of honeybees on our property. You've probably all heard of colony collapse disorder. It's taken out 30, I've heard in terms of 30 to 40% of the bee colonies in the United States. There are multiple reasons for that. Certainly, EMF exposure is considered one of the top reasons, mites possibly, and of course pesticides. So just very quickly, this first, this first report that I pulled up said findings of several works reported sharp decline in potential health hazards in honeybee populations due to cell phone radiation and could considerably weaken the infrastructure of food webs. That just means the pollination of our food supply. So now, now I'm just speaking as a local resident, just as if none of us would, would turn on our microwave and leave the door open. We really don't know the true effects of these really more powerful microwave and millimeter radiation. So I'm, I'm saying to you, if you cannot state certainly that the installation of this cell tower will not be harmful to human health, adversely affect pollinators such as honeybees, or possibly lower the market value of the surrounding homes, you would need to vote against this permit application, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ma'am, do you want that exhibit in the record? Your hand out.
Yes, please. Oh, yes, please.
Admitted as three, and if you could make sure a copy goes to the clerk.
Good. Mrs. Carol Fontana, if you wish to speak, please.
Hi, Carol Fontana, 2118 144th Street, Live Oak. Okay, so first of all, I had a question. So this tower will be used for 5G and possibly 6G, right? How far around is it expected? Would it just be like in the city, or is it supposed to go out through the county? I was just wondering. I don't know if you know that.
I don't, I don't, I don't know. That'd be a question for Mr. Flowers, or his representative, or whoever he may be. But anyway.
All right, because I'm not in the city, I'm in the county though, and, okay, so I'm more concerned, yes, property values will be affected, but I'm more concerned about the health aspects of this. You know, we now have 4G, which seems to work just fine, and 5G will have a frequency 20 times higher than 4G. And the higher the frequency goes, the smaller the wavelength, and then the wavelength can penetrate much smaller holes or vacancies, so they can penetrate. I don't, I'm not great in biology or anything, but I would think that would pose more of a risk to penetrating cells, tissues, so that has much more of a possibility of having a health effect. And yet we're given no assurance that this is safe. We're given no assurance that this won't cause cancer. And I don't think these people, you know, in this neighborhood should be subjected to that. It's like too close to the neighborhood, and we better off in a more remote location. So that's that aspect of it. But the other aspect, do we really even need 5G? What does 5G give us over 4G? I guess it'll give you industrial automa, what, automation, it'll give you virtual reality, it'll give you the internet of things, such as smart cities, smart homes, self-driving vehicles. You'll be able to talk to your refrigerator remotely. I don't know what you do with that, but it'll give you telemedicine, where you can have remote surgeries. I don't know. We've done fine with all these things up to this point. I don't like, you know, virtual reality or any of that stuff. And 6G will give you even higher frequencies, like 120 times what we have with 4G, and your smart cities will even get more sophisticated. You'll get holographic representation, telepresence, like in Star Trek. You know, it can be there via holograph. It'll give you augmented reality, virtual reality, AI. They claim it's going to better humanity, but will it? I don't, I don't know. I wouldn't like to see that in Live Oak. I don't really think that's a good thing, that that's what your plan is for the city. Because I moved to Live Oak two, three years ago. Because I moved to Live Oak two, three years ago for the countryside. I came here to live and thrive in the countryside among crops, cattle, fresh air, and Florida sunshine. And I was hoping this high-tech automated society where I came from, New York, I was hoping that wouldn't come here for quite a while, but I guess I was wrong. And I'm saying this 5G, 6G tower shouldn't be in anyone's backyard, and there's going to be transmitters all over the place because the signal doesn't go so far. So you're going to have to have those little transmitters on like every telephone pole or something to get it through the whole county. And I would not feel safe living near this tower, and I wouldn't want to be bombarded by that radiation. And I don't even want the technological advances, but do we have a choice? I don't know. Is that health freedom? I'm concerned for the health, and I don't want it, and I'm concerned about what it will do to us. And when will society be content with where we are? Isn't 4G enough? Seems like we keep going further and further and more advanced, hire this, hire that. When will they be satisfied? I don't know. What's going to come of this? I don't know if you're all familiar with the song. They brought to mind the song in the year 2525, when we were making these predictions. I thought this guy was very prophetic, you know, and he said, "In the year 5555," well, the year doesn't mean anything, but he says, "Your arms will be hanging limp at your sides, and your legs got nothing to do because some machine is going to do it all for you." Right? Is that where we're heading? That's not good. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fontana.
While he's passing that out, I mean, I've heard everything that you guys are saying.
You don't have one for me, that's okay.
I'm just going to make a couple comments, if you will, just for the public to consider. I mean, you know, as all of you have said, we're in a tough spot, but I hear the coverage, coverage, coverage. Well, I do know that it's not just about coverage, it's about capacity. Those towers can only handle so much traffic, if you will, and I'm by no means am I a cellphone expert, but when you're thinking about this, it's not just the coverage, it's the capacity. I mean, I've learned that in my four years being here on the board, that it's not always about the coverage map. A lot of it has to do with the capacity that the current tower, you know, can withstand. So I just want to throw that out there to you. And then some of the stuff that you're concerned, while they are all valid, it's not our board's decision to determine the 4G, the 5G, and the 6G. I believe that's going to be coming from the FCC and the feds. I mean, I don't know that we have the power, the legal power, to say, hey, we're not accepting 5G. If you'll... Just hold on a second.
Sorry.
I don't know, Mr. Attorney, if we have the power to restrict what the technological, I guess, capabilities of a cellphone tower could be.
Well, if I can go on as to what the legal standard is, but...
Yeah, we can let him speak first. I was just... While he was passing that out, I was saying, go ahead, Mr. Fontana.
Mr. Allen.
Go ahead.
Steve Fontana, 2118 144th Street, Live Oak. About a little over a year ago, we were approving a tower. It was in our county commissioners meeting, and I asked one question. I said, "Can I see the environmental impact statement?" And the answer shocked me. You know, I don't know if anybody else was surprised from it, but the answer was, "You don't have a legal right to ask safety questions about cellphone towers." I thought, "That's crazy." And I finally went and started to research things. Well, that may be true, but I just handed you an article from Stanford, Connecticut, from the Connecticut Examiner, and basically Stanford, Connecticut said, "We don't care what the federal law says, we're going to do what's right for our people." If you ask me, those guys, they're heroes. They're standing up for their people regardless of what the federal law says. See, they held a workshop, and they had multiple representatives come and discuss the health effects of 5G and 6G. Now, this is a little bit different in that they wanted to place these 5G antennas on all their power poles throughout the city, so it would be outside a kid's window or something like that. But I'm just going to read you one quote. Now, this is from the article. I'm just reporting what the Connecticut Examiner is reporting. It says, "Representatives said they were persuaded by research presented during an October meeting of the board's land use committee claiming to show that 5G technology can cause brain damage, headaches, memory loss, damage to reproductive organs, organs, and nervous system, and genetic damage, as well as harm to trees, birds, incense, and wildlife, which you heard before." So here's a city that really took that seriously. Now, you can do the same, but here's another way. You may be able to... We could live within the law, so to speak. You don't have to be martyrs. If you would just... What you could do, require the landowner and require the corporation to provide proof of personal liability protection for any harm in the future that comes from that tower. So this way... And that protects everybody, because what will happen is they're going to have to go to an insurance agency and say, "Okay, we want coverage to protect..." If some kid gets a brain tumor two miles from my tower, and I get sued for this, you have to cover me. That insurance company is going to turn to them and say, "Okay, let's look at all the safety information. Let me look at your design. Let me look at the fail safes that make sure that the power level doesn't go above what it's supposed to go." All the questions that you can ask, that insurance adjuster is going to have to ask. So for you, it becomes an administrative question, whereas the safety questions are asked by the people who have to put the money on the line. And I would say, require that for both the landowner and the corporation, because corporations sometimes, and I'm not saying that this corporation does this, but sometimes they'll decide that, "Okay, we're just going to decide to settle those, and we're not going to put the money into the environmental impact statements. Instead, we're going to put the money into lobbyists to go to Washington, DC, and tell the public that they have to take our product." Okay? And then they're going to turn around, and they're going to sue you if you don't take their product. That's ridiculous. So that's one aspect of this whole thing. And it makes me a little bit angry.
I can tell.
Sorry. I apologize for that. In some ways, it's similar to like my car. When I register my car, I have to provide proof of insurance. Okay? So that's all I'm saying you do. Now, my first request is just disapprove this tower, okay? You know, disapprove this tower because of everything associated with it. But at the same time, from a go-forward basis, and if you can't disapprove it, require them to show proof of personal injury liability protection for anybody who's harmed. Because we don't want to be sitting here a year from now, and a kid a couple miles away has a brain tumor, and there's his parents. Let me tell you, their lawyers are going to go off to Stanford, Connecticut, and they're going to find those experts, and you're going to have a line of them with a line of lawyers suing the landowner and the corporation. I don't know, you know, and I don't want to say that the corporation doesn't care, but they've got deep pockets. But does the landowner? We should protect the landowner in this way, too. A multimillion-dollar settlement for any landowner in this county would hurt, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Fontana.
Mr. Steve.
Anyone else from the public wishing to speak? Those are the only names that I had. So if anybody else is wishing to speak, please come forward. Try to keep it at three minutes if you can, please, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I'm tied from 219728 116th Place.
Did you get that, Logan? All right, good deal.
I wasn't going to speak tonight, and so I'm not really prepared. I'm going to give you the emotional version. I don't want to look at that tower. Tonight, I had to work late when I'm on my way home, and I got out of my car, the sun... I think you remember the last meeting, we talked about sunsets. The sun was still bright in the sky, but it was getting low, and it caught my eye, and I looked over there to the west, and I thought, "Really? We're going to have 323 feet up in the sky, and I won't be able to enjoy that, appreciate that." And so that's important, too. And you have some other people here tonight who are not comfortable speaking, who also live right on 49. And that tower is going to seem like it's from me to you, because they are right there. And I hope that you just decide that it's not a good thing. It's not a good fit for us, and we would appreciate to be able to enjoy our land and our neighborhood and the beauty of nature. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Harmon.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we will close public comment. Board discussion.
Before we get to discussion, Mr. Chairman, if I could take a minute just to advise the board, because since becoming county attorney, this is the first real heated quasi-judicial issue that's come before the board.
Yes, sir.
And first, I want to apologize to the board. I knew all this at the last meeting, and I tend to err on the side of shutting up, although most people wouldn't agree with that. So I should have been more aggressive in bringing this up at the last meeting. And please understand, everything I'm about to say is without any aspersions to anybody who's stated their concerns with putting it there. I don't think anybody doubts at all the genuineness of it, and I leave that to the board. However, there are certain things which bind this board, which this board needs to consider. Most of the time when you all are sitting up here, you're sitting up here as county commissioners who have policy options to say, "Well, move it here, do this, do that, let's think about it." When you're sitting as a quasi-judicial board, you're not sitting in that capacity. You're sitting functionally as a judge. And so when it comes to applications for exemptions to ordinances, exemptions to our LDRs, or those sorts of things, in our statutes and our LDRs, we have very clear criteria which must be met in order to get that exemption granted or that exception granted. You'll note every time Mr. Meeks comes up, the first thing he'll tell you is, "Here's how it meets the exceptions or exemptions under our LDR, and therefore it qualifies." So under Florida statute, Chapter 125, what it says is, when the board is sitting in its quasi-judicial stance, which is what it's doing here, the scope of review is very narrow. So the only thing that the board can consider is, does the applicant meet the statutory or codified through ordinance, LDR, et cetera, requirements for that exception or exemption? That is a yes or it is a no. If it does, presumptively, the board must grant the exception or the exemption. The board does have the discretion to deny, but the only time the board has the discretion to deny is there must be what's called sufficient evidence that... of a particularized harm that applies to this specific situation that would not apply to another like similarly situated person or entity, whatever, who's applying for the exception or the exemption. So there needs to be something about this very specifically that is the reason why the board's not going to grant it. Moreover, under that chapter, the board, if the board does deny an application for an exception or an exemption, and this is irrespective of the cell tower bit, which I'll get to also in a minute, the board has an affirmative obligation to come forth with a written report stating with particularity the reason for that denial. And it has to... The easiest part is if it doesn't meet one of the exceptions, but if it doesn't... Or one of the requirements, but in that situation, Mr. Meeks isn't going to bring it here before the board. So in that situation, the board is going to have to make a very specific finding as to what are the very specific facts that apply uniquely to this situation and would not apply in a general context to other people or other entities in a similar situation, which creates a problem in the context of cellular towers, because, again, I mean, no disrespect to anybody, any of the issues here, but these were very generalized issues. In addition to the Florida issue, we also have a federal issue, and as was brought up last time we were here, this got thrown at us. So in the Telecommunications Act of 1996, and that's 47 U.S.C. 253 and 332, as everybody on the boards are aware, we are subject to both state preemption and federal preemption, meaning we can't disagree with or go against applicable federal law, nor can we go against applicable state law. And so here, when it comes to the imposition of cell towers, there's been very specific findings that have been in place since 1996, where we had Ms. Johns at that last meeting very pointedly say, "You cannot consider, for example, the health impacts or the environmental impacts." And the reason from that comes from case law, where boards have tried to deny citing that. However, the Telecommunications Act explicitly says that a rejection can't be in place as a... Which, if that reasoning is applied uniformly, would functionally prohibit the imposition or the allowance of cellular towers to allow for cellular data service, cellular service. So for example, if you say, "We're not going to do it because we're worried about EMF radiation on bees and wildlife, et cetera," that's a generalized harm which would apply in every situation, which would have... Then there's... I'm not making this up, there's cases striking them down. Moreover, it puts us in a situation where the... That same Telecommunications Act gives the party who is asking for the exception or the exemption the right to get us to federal court. So if we deny an application, we would be sued in federal court, and there's an attorney's fees provision. So not only do we lose, but we pay for them to sue us if the board can't identify a very, very clear, specified, very unique reason for the denial that would apply in this situation that would not apply generally, and also doesn't violate the Telecommunications Act. And so in listening to the... What was brought forth before the board today as a legal opinion, and I'll defer to you all as to what you all want to do, but remember, you're not sitting up here as a political body, but as a judicial body. The harms articulated, such as property values going down, uncertainty about healthcare, uncertainty about its impact to wildlife, et cetera, those are the exact type of regulations when other entities, other municipalities or counties have voted them down and said, "No, that's where they get sued, and they lose, and they pay..." So not only... I want to be very clear, and when you lose, you're putting in the tower anyway, and you're paying their attorney's fees. So that's the standard that you all have to look at this through. It's not just... You're not sitting here as a policy matter, "Do we like it or do we don't?" It's through that prism of, "Does it meet the qualifications under our LDR or the applicable statutes for ordinance? If yes, it's presumptively valid, you must approve it unless you can identify in writing a very specific, unique-to-this-circumstance reason not to, which is supported by competent and substantial evidence." And then in addition to that, we have the complication of this being a cell tower and all of the other federal preemptions, which I can continue... There's more to it, but that's the easy one that applies in a situation like this. So I leave it to you all's discretion as to how you want to proceed, but I did want the board to understand the parameters in which this debate occurs.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison. Mr. Meeks, the application... I'll wait for you. Just a question that I had wrote down. The application, does it meet all of the LDR requirements in our LDRs?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, sir. That was my only question. Anybody else, while Mr. Meeks is up here, have any questions for Mr. Meeks, or I forget your name.
Graham Owens?
Owens.
Yeah, I'm with the...
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Owens or Mr. Meeks? Thank you.
I have one, Mr. Graham, real quick. I forget, one of the speakers mentioned it, but I'd forgotten. We did have something in here that shows the coverage and the current and future coverage. And I just see colors here, but I mean, do you have an idea, like, we talking 10 homes, 100 homes, people, things of that nature?
I don't know. Yes, it's...
Something like... I mean, it's just...
Yeah, it would just be this whole area right here. Not sure exactly how many square feet or...
Okay.
...square miles of the area.
Got you. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Owens. Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Owens? All right, see none. Board discussion. Any questions, comments, concerns, guys? I mean, you heard what county attorney had to say.
Well, I know it's in my district, and it feels like our hands are tied from what the attorney has said as far as discretionary, you know, policies and everything. It meets all the requirements. It is my district, and, you know, I'd do anything for y'all if I could, but it feels like our hands are tied. You know, I took care of the Tiger Lake community when I could during the LLC, but it feels like at this point, we have no say-so in the matter, really, unless they didn't meet the required land requirements, you know?
I don't... Mr. Marley, I would agree with that. I feel like our backs are kind of against the wall here. I mean, there's litigation that has lost over and over again, as Mr. Morrison has said, and, you know, I certainly don't want to see us end up in federal court and on the backs that Swanee County taxpayers have to pay that too, knowing that there's been case law, case law, case law that has lost, and then we get the tower anyway. So it's a lose-lose. You know, I'm sympathetic toward all of you landowners that are here. I don't know. It's up to you guys.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Perkins.
I mean, I'm hearing all that being said from the community, and I stand with them, but...
but, you know, then I look on the side of what our attorney is giving the advice here that we don't want to put the county in jeopardy. Mr. Meeks has done, has due diligence to make sure that everything was met, and we just in a tough spot. And I'm sure that, hope that they can understand and see that, you know, we do all we can, but what can we do?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Mr. Hale?
Yeah, I'll just say, Mr. Fontana, he, this information is basically what I had researched as well, and I didn't know his depth of what our attorney just told us and how all that works, but it's a horrible situation. I mean, it's kind of, almost like these, I don't even want to mention it, but I'm going to mention it anyway, it's almost like some of these panels are putting around the town, the solar panels and things like that. I mean, we kind of got our hands tied on that, probably in a very similar scenario. You know, we, we as a board, or we as a county, don't have any say of it anymore, and it's disheartening, it's unbelievable. But I don't know what to do. I mean, I don't want to deny this thing, and that's, and I'm just speaking from, this is just general discussion, common sense talking, just out loud. I think better when I talk out loud, guys, so just work with it. You know, we're sitting here, we've got some folks here who's very concerned about their community, concerned about their health, and things of that nature, but it's like if we go against this, then we're putting, if you listen to the attorney, we're putting the rest of our citizens in jeopardy of suing the whole doggone county. I mean, it's just ridiculous, but, and again, I don't have an answer, I'm just talking out loud, looking for help, looking for ideas and suggestions, that's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Hale.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner White.
Well, I'm sure everyone of you's got one. Well, I was raised in an area where we didn't have them.
Cell phones, don't we?
Yes.
Yeah.
And I don't know what that does to me, because I stay on it all day long, every day. So, I don't know if that's, that's getting me, or the cell phone tower, I appreciate where you guys are coming from, but I don't, with the advice of our attorney, I just, I just feel like we're, we're kind of in a hard place here. So, and does the tower bother you more than the cell phone bothers you? Because you got it stuck to your ear every day. So, what are we doing by eliminating the tower if you're still holding that cell phone up to your ear?
Thank you, Commissioner White. Well, guys, number nine on my little sheet here says, do we have a motion to adopt or like thereof? I added the "or like thereof" part.
Well, I, and I know some of you are going to be mad at me when I do this, but I feel like our hands are tied with this situation. I do feel for what you had to say, I do understand what you're saying, but I will make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Have a motion to approve by Commissioner White. Do we have a second? Have a second by Commissioner Perkins. So, a motion by Commissioner White, a second by Commissioner Perkins, all in favor, signify by aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign?
I'm going to oppose.
Sir?
Oppose.
You oppose?
Yes, sir.
So, motion carries four to one, with Commissioner Hale dissenting. We will close.
It's just because I don't like, it's nothing against the board or the cell phone tower, it's the rules that we have to abide by, opposed.
All right, we will move along, back to the agenda. I think we were at public concerns and comments, not in regards to item number 11. No, not 11. Any other, number 12, any other, any other public concerns or comments that are not in reference to item number 12? Miss, state your name and address for the record, Mr. Broders.
Keith Broders, 201 Ranchera Street Northwest, Live Oak, Florida, 32064. The thing that I wanted to bring to your attention is, is that how many constitutions has the state of Florida had in its history? The answer is six. Each time that the constitution was basically rewritten, the last time that it was rewritten was in 1968. At that time, the county of Swanee County and all of the counties in Florida had a representative in the state legislature. After the constitution was rewritten in 1968, Swanee County lost its representation. There's no one in the state legislature to represent our trees and our natural resources and our people. This was largely due to the fact that the U.S. Supreme Court made a ruling outside of their jurisdiction. They came in and they violated Article 4, Section 3 of the constitution, Article 4, excuse me, Article 1, Section 4 in the constitution, which basically says, the elections and basically the legislature of the state of Florida will be determined by the state legislature, not by the Supreme Court. The Supreme Court essentially took Swanee County and took away our representation. I believe that we should, it's time for us to write a new constitution for the state of Florida. The U.S. Constitution has 4,500 words, the Constitution of Florida has 45,000 words. The Constitution of the state of Florida has been amended 144 times since 1968. It is cumbersome, it's impossible for a member of the county commissioners or any other public official to preserve, protect, and defend a constitution that is that big. That's, that's humongous. I was, I venture to say that I doubt that anyone on this, on the counter up here has read and fully understands the constitution that they've sworn a note to preserve, protect, and defend. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Broders.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public wishing to speak? Mr. Hanke.
I know you want to move on, Mr. Chairman. I have one comment. We need to chair into our LDRs. We need serious to think about it.
Thank you, Mr. Hanke. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, we will move along to proclamations, presentations, I don't believe there are any. Mr. Scott? Consent agenda. Number 11 is being moved to general business for discussion later, so we have items two through 10. Any questions, comments, concerns, or motions?
I'd all for a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion by Commissioner Hale, a second by Commissioner Perkins, all in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Constitutional officers, any constitutional officers present wishing to speak? Seeing none. Staff items, I believe Mr. Norris, Mr. Fury, y'all flip a coin, figure out who's going first? Paper, rock, scissors, something? Age before beauty, right, Fury? Welcome, Mr. Fury.
Always. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. It's nice to get up ahead of Mr. Norris sometime. Although now he gets to go second, he might say something about me.
He gets the last laugh. Go ahead.
No, just a brief update, if you will, we just finished up soccer, right into baseball and softball. We had a big number of soccer, and we're getting 450 kids. So, we're outgrowing that little sports complex here pretty quick, and we're going to start, start planning for that other property next to us here as quick as we can, because there's a lot of kids out there. Saturday, we've got a tournament, I think Commissioner Land will be out there all weekend holding down the fort for a baseball tournament.
There is nine you, the nine-year-olds, the 10-year-olds, and the 11-year-olds. There is three different, I guess, age groups. Twenty-some teens will be here Saturday and Sunday.
Wow.
Good times.
Y'all better behave. We've got lots of projects going on with inside the city, the whole county, Town of Branford, and the South County parks, we've got a lot going on. And let me just take a moment just to thank the staff, the county departments, I know we've been, you know, Mr. Norris and you guys, Team Swanee, and I'm all about that as well. Just the building department, you know, facilities, Mike and Gene and LT, the guys just, whether it's clearing trees, or putting in a water fountain, or fixing a boardwalk at the springs, whatever it is, we call, and, and, you know, they're there. Michael say it's going to be a couple of weeks, but then he's there the next day, he's just on the spot. So, just wanted to thank those guys publicly for what they're doing and supporting the Parks and Rec Department, because we can't do all that work sometimes, we need those guys. But just a quick update, the Greenway got started this week, and they're dropping lime rock, and they're milling up asphalt, and things are moving quick down there on the trail. We, we're getting started on some bid documents for Charles Springs and the floating boat dock out there, we'll get that started here pretty quick. The livestock building at the, at the Coliseum, we're working with the architect now on some plans and designs, we'll get those back here in a few weeks, and a first look at those. After the fair, we will be looking at demoing those old barns over there at the Coliseum and the fairgrounds, so potentially could get some kickback or some calls from, from some of the old-time farmers and people that have used that buildings over the years, but when those come down and we have a new facility out there, they're going to be happy and they're going to be proud, but just, we'll bring that back to you as we get closer, but that'll, that'll be coming up as well. Working with Water Management in North Florida, professional services at Royal Springs with that gatehouse going in, we need to do some parking and some roadway improvements down there, so we got to work through a general permit with the district, and then they've been real helpful in working with us there. Four FERDA grants going on, we got three more, we ranked 11, 17, and 22 out of 68 projects. So, those are three $200,000 projects that should be coming to the county, we won't know until the governor's budget in July, but those are highly ranked and look like they'll make the list, make the cut. We continue, we're starting on Coliseum and X2 remodel, I know that's something you guys have been looking at the last couple of years to get that off the books, so we're working through that, through all the rentals and reservations, it's been a challenge. And now, of course, with Shannon's news last week with the three multipurpose community facilities, we'll be working with him and Brenda on, on what that looks like in the next couple of years, too. Let's see, had a, had a call from Water Management, Mr. Scott and I met with Water Management District, and we've done such a great job with Little River and the rest of our springs that they're asking us about our interest in managing Telford Springs and making that a county park. So, we will, sounds like a great idea, and then right, right before that meeting, we got word that they burned two of our porta potties to the ground at Little River Springs. You know, two steps forward and one step back, but I have faith in our people. But that is, that is a challenge. So, anyway, we'll be looking at that and probably bring that back to you here, you know, at some point in the future, too, so it's a, it's a good problem to have, so we're looking forward to a potential park at Telford Springs. And I think that's all I have, unless you have any questions. I'll be in a class the next three days for emergency management training, so.
Good for you.
Feel free to call me and get me out of class, an emergency phone call if need be. Anyway, that's all I have.
How it gonna be that easy?
Not a chance.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Perkins.
Mr. Fury. I got a call here owned, I think about two nights ago, and I sent an email, I don't know if you received one, an email from Mr. Williams that, and some concerned citizens, the concerned citizens thing, I don't know if you, board, y'all got any of those? And what they're, they're looking for is to have something for the older people, to have something for younger people, too, that's not in school, and have some type of activity for them, so they want to know if they can get some help through the Parks and Rec or something, have something, a ballroom tournament or something like, like thing, but when I get further stuff, I will forward it to you.
Sure, that sounds good. Some senior games.
Yeah, so that's something. That's something you'd be interested in?
Yeah, tell them to call me, absolutely.
Okay.
We're not just for the kids, we're for us old folks, too.
Yeah, they need exercise.
What do you mean "they"? I thought you were on that list.
I am.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fury. Mr. Norris. Just poking at you, Commissioner Perkins.
I know, it's, it's good.
He's old. I'm not going to say what Mr. Meeks said, but apparently there's a video of a Parks and Rec guy leaving a porta potty, and there was a lot of hot air left in it, and it internally combusted or something, I don't know what happened, so I would check into that. You do have cameras out there, don't you? Yeah, okay, all right. Yeah, just a quick update, we've been pretty busy the last few weeks, obviously. You guys, if you hadn't been out that way, I knew some of you had, but heading out 137, there's a lot of work going on out there at the Trulie facility, there's a lot of equipment and a lot of earth being moved out there, so they're really getting with it out there. So, glad to finally see that project kicking off, and now that we can put those utilities to work out there, so return on investment's huge. So, appreciate that, and those guys, and what you've done to bring that project. Also, we've had the opportunity to go visit with FPL, Commissioner White, Chris and myself were able to go, it was kind of interesting, but both FPL and Duke Energy had some economic development events this last, last week, and good stuff, talked about a lot of good things, and, you know, the gamut, development, workforce, and as always, what a site is ready, when a site is ready, and when a site is not ready, and a site's ready when it looks like a plowed or a manicured field, I guess you'd say, Commissioner, that's all planted and pretty, they don't want to see a tree on it, you know, so they can visualize that, they, they just want to see it, you know, you know what I'm talking about.
Site-ready.
Yeah, that's what they call site-ready. So, you know, obviously, we're getting there, we've got properties, in their mind, they're not site-ready. We, I think, in our mind, think they're site-ready, but is that not accurate?
Yes, sir. They want a flat piece of dirt with grass.
Yep, with utilities, so, we're working towards that. I know Mr. Scott's aggressively working towards that on some of the property that we have out there, so, but just letting you know, I mean, that's the way the world sees it, so, but, you know, obviously, we have to acquire the property first, for us to get it site-ready, and we got to get the infrastructure there, for it to be site-ready, so. But good stuff, we appreciate those guys inviting us, and thanking them for what they do. Also, just a quick reminder, I don't know if anybody's here from the chamber, but the gala's this weekend. And I know most of you guys are going to be there, so appreciate your support in the Chamber of Commerce. And we did, at one of our Duke Energy events, I do want to mention, we had the city of Live Oak, and, and the Town of Branford was, Stacy was there representing them, so there was some, we were talking about some downtown revitalization and different things for those communities, so they were included in those conversations as well, and I think meeting them well, and so, you know, hopefully it'll help the entirety of Swanee County, so, but appreciate your participation, appreciate the support.
We do, Mr. Norris, before you leave, is the Friday morning, is there NF, aren't you going to NFED, is that this Friday you're going to that?
March 1st. Yeah, March 1st. March 1st, yes. Did Mandy not keep you straight on that?
Man, she tries her best, but man, I'm a challenge.
Yes, it's March 1st, and.
Oh, gotcha.
For those of you who have signed up, we look forward to a good meeting.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
Mr. Norris?
No. Any other staff wishing to speak? Commissioner items, any commissioner items? Those county attorney items, Mr. Morrison?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just a quick litigation update, I've got a couple of cases pending on behalf of the county. There's a, for lack of a better phrase, a squatter out on some county-owned property out over by the airport, he should be off imminently, because having the sheriff serve, show up and serve process tends to move things along. And then also, if you remember, we talked about, there was property over in Swanee Estates that we had a title issue. We're in the process now of getting Mr. Joel Foreman appointed as a trustee to handle the corporation's business that failed to identify the block and page number, but that should be wrapped up probably another two or three months, and we'll have title cleared on that, so that way we can get that sold, but just wanted to give you guys an update as to where the county's at in those couple of cases. That's all I have.
Commissioner Hale, is one of your family members squatting out in the airport?
No, not this time.
Make them a dollar.
Not this time. You did, you tried, you just passed. Distraught of their commissioner's office, I just, one thing I did want to say.
Yes, sir, we can go back to that.
Yeah. I seen Chief Hand, but it reminded me, I got a phone call from Mr. and Mrs. Bell that do live in my district, and they just wanted to send the biggest hooray to your folks that came out, and he broke down talking to me, he was, you know, obviously very, felt helpless when his wife needed help and he couldn't, and when your guys got there, they did everything they were supposed to do, and they did it right, and she's in good health and fine today, but he was trying to explain to me how helpless he felt not being able to help his wife, but then, not, not everybody wears capes, is what he was saying, so, big hats, I'm not sure who went out there, if you can figure that out, yeah, tell them thank you, please.
Good deal, thank you, that's, that's always good news. Thank you, Commissioner Hale. General business, number 11, we're back to number 11, number 11 was pulled off the consent for general business discussion. Number 11 is award bid 2024-01 to the Catalyst Water Main Extension to Low Bitter Music Construction, budget impact funded by Job Growth Grant G0094, open January 16, 2024. I believe Mr. Bailey is in the building. Yes, he is. Mr. Bailey, you are summoned to the podium. Bailey, you are summoned to the podium. Please, sir. So, Mr. Bailey, I had a couple of questions on this, just for board discussion to make sure that I understand this correctly, I spoke to you a little bit about this earlier today, but we have to have that discussion here, for everyone else to hear that. On the pipe, so, the 13-inch pipe versus the 18-inch pipe, my question that you were going to calculate after we spoke and bring tonight were the water flow, what is that? I mean, my concern was, is I'm all about saving money for the taxpayer, I mean, and this doesn't affect the low bidder, because the low bidder's a little bitter on both the 18 and the 13, so we're not questioning the bidder, I'm just questioning the product, does the 13, what's the difference in water flow?
Can I back up?
Yeah, I said a lot.
Using 13-inch and 18-inch, it's not, pipe is a 12-inch pipe.
The inside diameter is what's.
Well, they're still, they're still, they're still considered both, there's two pipes for laying, they're considered to be 12 inches. We got, we bid two different materials, we did bid PVC and we bid HDPE, what you're referring to is the DR, the diameter ratio, okay? PVC is less flexible, a little bit denser on the material, so the wall thickness is thinner on that at the selected pressure rating that we have for the project. The HDPE being a more flexible material has a thicker wall on it, but it's kind of against what you'd think, but the DR goes down on it, even though it's DR 13 and a half versus the 17 the other way, that means it's got a thicker wall, okay? All right, now, so what that means is on the HDPE, with that increased wall thickness, we have a smaller inside diameter, so we have a reduced cross-sectional area for flow. What that equates to, the PVC can carry about 1,500 gallons at our normal pressures we're looking at, gallons per minute, the HDPE will carry about 1370, 1350, somewhere in that range, so it's about 11% reduction in flow. Now, our minimum flows we have for our fire out there, demand out there would be, because we've got industrial commercial, be about 1,000 gallons a minute, would be the minimum that we would have out of our fire hydrant, so we exceed all that, you exceed the capacity that you have to be able to pump out there, you're going to save about $400,000 based on the low bid contractor, if you go with HDPE versus the PVC, but you do have 11% reduction in capacity in that pipe.
Thank you. Yeah, so that was, that was, my concern is, is, one, knowing that, what that reduction was, and I'm all about saving money, but if we're going, if this, and we can't, we can't without a shadow of a doubt predict what that volume looks like, or the need for that volume looks like in five years, 10 years, right, we'd be speculating, but.
Well, we got the master plan, that we've assigned land uses and all to out there, and we've got what our current users are, could we have a user come in that would just blow it out of the water? That's always a possibility, I mean, we can't predict the future, but based on normal land uses, we have two 12-inch water mains out there, once this is built, either option will suffice for the foreseeable future for what the county has out there.
That's what I wanted us to understand, is that with either one, we would be good for.
Yes, sir.
A good while.
Yes.
Because I didn't want to come back in and say $400,000 and in five years you're telling me, we're out of water, we got to build another pipe, and then, well, there went the $400 and we're spending $2 million to redo the same thing, but I think we'll be okay. Yes, sir, Commissioner White?
I called Mr. Bailey this afternoon as well, because we put the same pipe at 137, and my concern was, we were working on this regional utility with Columbia County, so we're trying to get like.
Same.
Like pipe and fittings and.
I didn't think about that.
But according to Mr. Bailey, they're going to put in HDPE, too, so.
So they'll be familiar, if we do form a regional, they'll be familiar with that product.
That's just for y'all, I just wanted to give you all that for your.
Columbia County's in the process of letting a contract to run a water main from Ellisville to Fort White, and that's about 10 miles, and it's a 12-inch HDPE as well, that's what they select.
Perfect, so, thank you for that, Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Chairman.
It was substantial savings for them to go that route as well.
Commissioner Perkins?
Mr. Bailey, just for knowledge, the HDPE pipe and the PVC pipe, what's the lifespan of that in the ground?
In the ground, they'll be there as long before any of the rest of us will be around, so, they'll be there forever.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Perkins. Anyway, guys, that's really all that I had, I wanted to have a conversation publicly and for you guys to hear, too, that was my concern.
Appreciate the explanation.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Bailey, anybody else got any questions?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Yes, sir.
Okay, guys, all I'm hunting is a motion, or lack of.
Before we do the motion, the bid price that we have here in front of us, is that with the HDPE or is that with the PVC pipe?
No, the, if you look on page number 11, if you look on the back.
Set the back page.
The very back, yeah, it's got each bid broken down, the low bidder's the same contractor
for both products, so.
I prepared, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I prepared the contract to be used between the county and Mr. Music, and it's the 1.4 million.
Right, the 1.488, $1,488,256 versus $1,997,800 for those of you that may not know what we're talking about, same contractors, low bidder on both products, so the choice is that we would have potentially is the choice in the product, I'm okay with the HDPE pipe, but I just wanted y'all to hear that, my thoughts and concerns publicly. But it's up to y'all, I'm just one guy.
I make a motion to approve the alternate bid, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion by Commissioner White to approve the alternate bid, which is the HDPE pipe, have a second by Commissioner Mobley, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries 5-0, Madam Clerk. Number 13, additional agenda items, Mr. Scott, are there, none. Number 14, administrator's comments and information, Mr. Scott?
Okay, one thing that's been kicking around for quite a while, it's probably several years, is fuel, we've always, historically for 30 years or so, been using Jim Hinton Oil, and thought it'd be a good time to just shop and just see what other communities are doing around us to get started, and see if we want to do anything different, you know, I know that Hinton does a great service for us, you know, they're there to help us, you know, anytime we need to help, but anyway, due diligence, we want to just make sure that we're doing what we need to do, so we're going to be looking at that in the next several weeks, so, moving forward.
Let me speak to that before you go any further, obviously, I'm employed there, have been for, how long now, 12 years, that relationship goes back much further than my employment, but I'll support that 100%, and in the event that you need something or authorization in regards to that, I would direct you to contact the vice chair and work with him on his authorization, if you do that, please, sir.
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
Couple of other things, we're evaluating the striping, it's that time of year where it's warming up, so we can do some striping, we do have prices from our vendor we usually use, and be shopping for other vendors, just in case there are others out there, but we've got several roads that need attention, we tackled a few this past year, and, you know, when you ride down the road and there's no stripes at all, it's a little troublesome, but we'll be looking at that. Although, you know, that Lee Abershold, our veteran service officer, had applied for another job, and he, with the VA, he chose to stay with us.
Awesome.
And excited about that, a lot of positive comments from how he's helped our citizens, he does have a law degree, he's not a lawyer, but he does have a law degree, and that's helped him a lot, he's got like a 93% success rate in getting benefits for the veterans here, like the president did last meeting, very positive economic benefit for our community because of the work he's done and helping the veterans, so just want to let y'all be aware of that. We have with us tonight also, and I'm going to pronounce his name wrong, John Duham, Duham, and his wife Mary, he's our new airport manager, just a wave, he's still got to get past all the processes, but excited about having him here, he's spent years in military, retired from the military and up in Alaska, and so, no why we won't come to Florida, if you're in Alaska, I have no idea, but anyway, just excited about having him on board to raise the bar a little bit higher in what we do out at the airport. The community paramedic, Micah Taylor has hit the ground running, doing a tremendous job already, already looking at other grant opportunities to help grow that opportunity for us to utilize, already taking pressure off of a lot of different aspects of the fire rescue, I don't want to speak for the chief and what they're doing out there, but I've just been really impressed what she's done already, she's working with Shannon on some other grants, and Shannon sat down for a few minutes, Stephanie, when I got back from some doctor's appointments, and just, the collaboration's just going very strong, but trying to look at other options we've got, again, for the citizens. The, we talked a couple of weeks ago about the other building at the adjacent property, the home at the airport next to where the squatter is, and we talked about getting that demolished, fire rescuers are going to use that for the short term to do some training in that brick home, and there's some things they can't do, but be a good rescue points and things, so they can do some techniques there, so we won't tear it down until we get the training out of the way, but excited about those possibilities. And, you know, Jason touched on it earlier, but watching all the departments work together, make it better for our citizens has been pretty exciting, so that's all I've got, unless you've got any questions for me.
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Any update on the garbage, litter pickup?
We're trying to get the bid specs out to get that, sorry, the guys are still working between the inmates and also the guys working on Fridays, but, you know, just need to secure our loads and not roll down our windows and toss it out, but.
100%.
Biggest thing, I think, is people going to the dump and just letting it go, go nilly out the back of the truck or trailer.
And I, well, I came back from Steen Hatch last week and came across 252 from Mariville, and, well, even down my road, it's feed sacks, dog food sacks, garbage, I mean, it just, it looks awful.
Right.
Just wanted to see where we were at.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner White, I would agree, it looks bad out there, but hopefully we can get some answers here soon. Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Scott?
Yes.
All right, so, none, we will move toward closing comments. Mr. Perkins?
Yes, sir, I guess I should have said it with the district minister, but I have a young lady here in the audience there, Cynthia Robinson, also, she's a local DJ for FM 98.7, she's one that had called me, asking about those replacement homes, she's one of the Pacific and the Stanley, one of the mobile homes out at the park, unfortunately, her house got severely damaged during the storm, and so she had to be housed out there at the park, so I just wanted to have her say something there, she come, and so she did tell me that she was given the opportunity to get the home, she was very grateful for it, and she wouldn't mind staying a few days longer to receive a home versus a mobile home, she's still in a mobile home, and she'd rather have a home than have a mobile home, so I'd like her to come and speak to that if she will.
Good deal. Welcome.
So if you turn to Live Oak, 98.7, you're here out there in the mornings.
Thank you.
She's also the local minister.
Welcome.
As you said, my name is Cynthia Robinson, and I am the local DJ at 98.7, our Christian radio station.
Greatness.
My address is 1313 Seventh Street, but now we're at the site where the trailers are out there, and I just came to say thank you, because, you know, I don't, for your role in helping us to get back into our home, get back and get an actual home, because we were living in an older trailer, and it needed some repairs and everything, but I guess God said, you know, we don't want you to repair it, we want to tear it down, so he just, you know, did what he did, and, you know, and we just, you know, we were, it was the first time in my life I've ever been homeless, so I never, you know, had never experienced it.
Right.
So we went through a whole bunch of emotions, but then when we found out that this, that the Live Oak had gotten this grant to build homes, and then our county commissioner over there had said, instead of mobile homes, actual homes, it just set my heart on fire, and I just want to just say to you all, for y'all's role in there, thank you very much, and I'm sure all of the people who are living out there are going to say thank you as well.
Good deal.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson.
Well, we couldn't accept the thanks without thanking our staff, too, because it's the county staff that, you know, it would be, well, missing of us, I guess, if we didn't acknowledge our staff that fights so hard for those grants, but I'm so glad that they're helping, you know, they're helping you, God bless.
Thank you so much, well, y'all got a face, actual face to the whole, you know, situation, so thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am, thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Ms. Perkins, anything else?
So we just grateful, again, for all the great work our departments are doing, doing awesome jobs, and we thank for them, and just all of our citizens, and, you know, we thank you for all your concerns, and just sometime we can be a help, and sometime we just have to throw our hands up in the air and say, we did the best we can, so we're sorry, but thank you all for coming and supporting us, we appreciate you.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Perkins, Commissioner Mobley?
Yes, thanks to our staff and everybody for coming, and I'd probably keep Mr. Bart in our prayers, he's kind of down, missing him tonight, so he's, he's not doing too good, but keep him in your prayers.
Absolutely, thank you, Commissioner Mobley. Commissioner Hale?
Yes, sir, talking about Mr. Bart, I think even before he wasn't doing well, he had a loss in his family as well, so definitely our prayers go out to him. Like everyone, thank you to our staff, thank you to everyone that's here tonight, thank you for my board and our discussions, and I just enjoy being part of this board and the things that we're doing for Swanee County and our teams as well. I did want to mention the Cato family, I think some of you may know what's going on, but I'll say, a good friend of mine, Greg Water, sent this to me, and the one thing that sticks out to me here, it says, "Our God is the ultimate physician," so let's never forget that, and keep the Cato family in your prayers, please, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Hale. Commissioner White?
I was just going to give a, we had a regional utility meeting last week, I think Shannon, is Shannon here? Did you give the attorney that agreement yet? So we've got a basic agreement together with whoever wants to join Columbia County so far, I'm not sure who else is going to join, but it's been brought back for the attorney to review and see if we can come up with a plan moving forward with that, and many thanks to Shannon and whoever was helping you, Shannon, I guess Chad was, for compiling all the information on what we actually do on and what sizes it all is, and, well, when we sit down and do that and Columbia County brings theirs to the table, you find out we're both kind of in the same position with kind of the same assets, so I think it's going to be a real positive thing moving forward, but I'll keep you updated as we move along, of course, that agreement will have to come before the board to be approved if you so choose to do so. Also, an update on the county mine, I have a meeting with Mr. Chuck and Lee Hatch in the morning to discuss that further, I know we've been beating it around for a good while now, but I think we may be getting close to something here to finish this up, so just wanted to inform you of that, and also, I just want to tell you people about the cell phone tower, it's, I'm just, I'm elected to do what I think's best for the county and for us as well, and so that's what I'm trying to do, I don't disregard anything you had to say and I feel for you with your positions that you had, but I felt like it was more prudent to save the county from big legal expenses, so just want to throw that out there.
Thank you, Commissioner White, I would, sir, I would echo, I mean, Perkins alluded to it as well, and so did Commissioner White and Hale and all of you, I mean, while it's not a good deal, I mean, the ramifications have not proven that, you're going to end up in federal court and you're going to lose, that's what I heard, and then you're going to pay their lawyer fees and the tower's going to get built anyway. going to get built anyway. So as you stated, I mean, you know, you have to look at all those options and make the best decisions you possibly can. Is it, is it fun? Is it exciting? Absolutely not. Baseball tournament this weekend, as Mr. Perry said, 26 teams here, that'll be economic impact there, Mr. Norris. It's a two-day tournament, so there'll be folks spending the night and shopping and using our restaurants. That's good stuff. Trulieve, it's really, really good to see a project finally come to start producing a return on the investment that, that, well, the board before this board, but did do, and this board stood behind that decision, and you're going to hook up a, a big user on that utility out there for...
It's good for a community.
And when they're done, there'll be at least a couple hundred jobs. I don't want to put words in their mouths, but more than a couple hundred. So that'll be good. Swanee County Chamber, their gala is this weekend.